Back from somewhere. Good morning, everyone. And I'd like to welcome everyone to the Jackson County Border Supervisors Meeting for Tuesday, September 22 of 2020. And with us today, we have Kelly from the newspaper, we have KMAQ, I see Sarah's with us, Julie Fern is with us, Luanne, our executive assistants in the background here, Lisa, our county auditor is here, Larry is online with us, he's taking his little break and we're glad he can join us anyway today, Larry McDevitt, Jack Willie, and myself, Mike Stinas are your county supervisors. And we will start with Mike Clausen, our Jackson County Assistant Engineer. Good morning, Mike.
Morning.
Morning.
I also see Todd was online too, correct?
Yes.
Todd at Kenny is our interim county engineer.
The first thing I have on the agenda is the entrance installation and maintenance policy revisions. If the boards had a chance to look through that.
I did have a chance and I thought they were good. Is that something that come from the state level or is that something that we added because of, was there a reason?
We've always had an efforts policy. The last one. The last one was.
Basically, this was just kind of.
Yeah, just.
Just an update.
Just an update.
So whatever's highlighted and in red here.
Yep.
And Todd had the one question on there about whether we wanted to maintain the culverts.
So I guess my question on that, when we initially put that in, that is the property owner's responsibility to buy the culvert anyway, correct?
Right.
What and why?
Construction of the driveway and the culvert has always been the property owner's expense. The only reason we kept the maintenance of the culvert in is if it would get plugged over the years, we could go back and clean it out or replace it if it got bad. That's what's the past policy.
I guess I can see the silt problem or get filled in with something. I can see that maybe might be unless they did some major work on their property was the reason for that. Yeah, that caused the silting in or whatever it may be. I don't know that we're responsible to replace when they had initially put it in anyway. I guess I think comments on that, Todd?
Yeah, so the only thing, and I would agree that if it's a ditch cleaning project upstream or something that the county was doing and it caused siltation through their culvert, then I would think that would be something that the county would be responsible to maintain. It would just be, you know, sometimes entrances have pretty large culverts or even sometimes we've had in Clint County where it's an actual bridge. So we didn't want to maintain, we didn't want to have to pay to maintain, say, the timber deck on a bridge or the piling of a bridge or something like that. So it's, it kind of removes the liability or the responsibility of the county to maintain the private property entrance. You know, you still can put rock on the entrance or something, you know, just so people don't track mud out onto the road as a hazard to the public. But you probably want to just limit the amount of maintenance you're going to do on a private entrance as we can.
I agree. Do we want to strike that highlighted area then? Is that what's your suggestion? Either or?
Well, you could add some language that says, you know, provide routine maintenance to approve rents on roads under Jackson County's jurisdiction. Something I might say, you know, that provides a benefit to the traveling public, you know? So it's the work you're doing is perform, the work you're performing is a benefit to the traveling public and not necessarily specific to the property entrance, the owner of the property entrance.
Yeah, there's two highlights there, two number cleaning the plug covers that maybe could stay, but replacing as far as the worn out.
So just use have just number one.
Number one.
Not number two.
Correct.
Or you can just delete both items, one and two, just say, you know, kind of use discretion. If it's a benefit to the traveling public, you could do the work, but just eliminate items, one and two, just leave the, leave that paragraph under maintenance by the county in there.
Okay. Mike, you okay with that?
Yeah, that's fine. We'll get that in print then next week.
For approval.
Yeah, that'll be fine.
RUT stands for?
Rhodes Tax.
Rhodes Tax, correct. I knew that.
Wanted to make sure Mike knew it, right?
It was a quiz. It was a quiz.
Jeopardy.
The next thing I have is an underground permit for Interstate Power and Light Company which aligns in Energy, South Fork Township, Section 13. They want to install an underground electric along the south side of 63rd Street.
I only have one question before we go on. This maintenance policy revision, does that need to be by board action or?
We tabled it till they bring us a new next week.
So you're not going to do any motion to take one?
No, no.
We just discussed it.
Bring it back next week.
Okay.
Okay, so then getting back to the underground permits for a line energy is they're going to be placing the four inch duct along the right away line on the south side of 63rd Street by the interstate center to run your power lines through.
Recommended for approval.
Ask the board to approve them.
So moved.
I would second that. I have a motion of second to approve the underground construction permit from Interstate Power and Light Company as presented in South Fork, Section 13. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carried. Oops, I forgot Larry was on here. You can do this. Sorry about that.
He did second.
That's all right.
Thank you.
Okay. I guess we have the 28E agreement next on the boards. I don't have it on my list. I don't have any.
Well, apparently Sarah had some comments that she wanted to make about the 28E. So we'll hear what Sarah has to say, I guess, and see what we're going to do from there.
So I had a chance to read it and I had a conversation with Sarah and Todd. And of course, there's a few, there's some language in there that I didn't understand, quite understand. So I would sure leave it up to Sarah to interpretate for me. Todd didn't seem to have a lot of concerns, but go ahead, Sarah.
So item number two is where my concern is that states no funds shall be held separately pursuant to this agreement, but shall be allocated by the respective signatories as that fourth year in. Upon first reading, that makes it sound like the county and the city are going to pool their money together, which is not what's going to happen. And later on in this agreement, it states how projects can be funded, that the city's going to pay the first million and then they will pay, they will pay the contractor directly and then ask us for the 66% reimbursement. So I don't know that number two is even necessary. And that's, that's my only issue with it.
Todd, I have a question please, if you could answer. We know that Macau City received a million dollar grant. If, if, if the bids come in and say 800,000, what is Jackson County's obligation?
So the obligation basically be the same. We are still going to provide the Construction Observation Administration. The city is still going to provide the design, the expense for the design. And then basically, as long as it's, if it's under that million dollars, there would be no additional obligation by the, by Jackson County.
It is an 80/20 project though. So somebody has to come up with 20% of the cost.
Yeah, and I haven't seen the funding agreement. Are they going to use, were they going to use in kind contribution? Mike, do you know?
I don't know. I'm having this.
Give that into 2080.
There's no in kind in the 2080 though.
No, so the, there'll be a separate, there'll be a funding agreement between the DOT and the city of Macau. And since they were awarded the funds, and I guess that's why I want to see, they haven't, they haven't received that yet, but I want to see what that says because that will stipulate how they're going to, how they will achieve their match. If it's going to be in kind because they're paying for the design, that may be all the money it's required for the match plus our, plus the county's contribution for the inspection administration or inspection and observation.
Upper side of it.
Yeah.
Yeah. The bottom line is if there is, say it goes over the million, the thought process was we would, the county would just use the FM funds or initially to reimburse and then we could reimburse our FM with BR. But the idea was that we would not be expending any local funds or paying any local funds directly to the city of Macau. It would be through the DOT in either the FM account or the BR account.
Okay, so do we need that funding agreement from the DOT in place before the 28E is okayed?
I don't think so. I mean, the 28E, we're going to be responsible, how do I say this? That's probably a good question. The 28E is going to, or excuse me, the funding agreement is going to hold the city of Macau liable for their 20% match. And I guess I'd, I guess maybe that is a question that is the city just planning on doing the 20% match and then, and then assuming all that responsibility and we just pay what we're paying? Or are we, are we responsible for the additional 20%? That's a good question.
Oh, we could reimburse them for the 20%. If that came to that, I would think.
Yeah, my, what I propose is that we're going to responsible for the 20%. I'm assuming the city's not going to just assume that. So we would be paying either out of the FM account or BR account, just like I had talked about.
Yeah, so the 20% when it gets split with the 66/34 percentage as we agreed or that was in the 28E?
It should, yeah, it should be, you know, any expense that occurs should be split based on that other than what's, based on that percentage, other than what we previously agreed to. So the design, we're not splitting that 66 through four in the construction administration we're not because we stipulate what we're doing there.
Right, that's, that's their assignment, that's our assignment.
Yes.
So Sarah, is it safe to say that you could contact maybe the city attorney and you guys discuss this and come to an agreement?
Well, I don't actually know which attorney is working on this, but I can certainly reach out to Gerald and just tell him that I have a concern about too, that, you know, number two. And if he wants the attorney to reach out to me, then they can.
But I did talk to Gerald last week also when I read it and I said, I really didn't understand it. So I don't know why it was changed to that point that, you know, from Todd's initial. So I guess I just didn't understand.
And I understand the other changes are more like adding some legalese in. I don't have any problems with that. It's just that no funds thing is confusing to me.
We probably do need to get that, the, the, the cost share or the, you know, the, the 20% figured out and probably spelled out the 28E just so everybody's aware of it. It's probably not good to make assumptions how that's going to work. So I would say that we probably need to have a follow up conversation with Gerald. And it'd be nice to see that the funding agreement, the federal aid funding agreement between the city and the state, just so we, we want to be, I guess, in compliance with that agreement as well. So maybe I'll just reach out to Gerald and we'll just, we'll put something in this 28E that talks directly to, you know, the, the cost share part of it, the 20% that we need to have. So it's just spelled out, so there's no guessing.
I think that's a great idea. I know they're in a hurry to get us to pass this, but like, you know, like we said, they had it for two weeks and didn't take action on it. And so we got it back and now we're, they wanted us to take action today, but it sounds to me like we need to put it on hold till next week so that you have an opportunity to talk to Gerald and get some additional wording in there and so that it's something that we can live with and be happy with.
Do we have any idea when the agreement from the DOT and the city would come in place? What kind of timeframe that usually takes?
So what, what is, what, Mike, what'd you say? It usually comes in about two or three months prior to letting, I would say?
Something like that. They do, the city did sign the agreement for the funding, so I don't know if there's anything in that wording in that. I haven't seen that, so I don't know what was all in that agreement.
So they, they, they have the city BR funding agreement already?
Yeah, they signed, I'm sure they had signed that. They, I think they got that like a month, a month or a month and a half ago.
Maybe have it with us.
Well, I'll hold off then, reach out to Gerald until Todd has a chance to talk to him about that 20%. And then if you add language, then I can review that and then talk to him about everything.
Want to have Todd just exchange information with you and then you proceed?
Oh, I think if we include everybody on the emails or the conversations that we're all aware of what's, what's happening, is there any way that we could proceed with it then before next meeting?
Depends on how quickly we get that language together, I guess.
Yeah. If we got to call a special meeting or whatever we got to sign, if we got to sign something and have a special meeting.
Well, and we have to write a resolution yet too. I don't know if anyone's written it, but it does say that this agreement has to be passed by resolution, so.
Right, right.
And I would think, I mean, I don't know what the timeline is that the city is on, but you know, next Tuesday's the 29th, so we're not the end of September yet.
Okay. I guess we'll read the follow up emails or conversations that come in the next day or two and see what happens.
And I would say if there's an opportunity for us to have a special meeting to approve it before next Tuesday, there isn't any reason we couldn't, right? As long as we have a 24 hours notice.
I mean, we can do that by electronic too, correct?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Go to work.
Good.
Thanks.
Okay, and then the next thing I have is Iowa County Engineers Association is putting together bridge candidates for a build grant. Last year they did, they had $25 million for projects through the federal government. And they don't know, it hasn't been, the new grant hasn't been set up yet, but they're trying to get ahead of the game and get some candidates lined up. And we've been talking with Todd here, we've decided to submit the one that was damaged on 82nd Avenue.
My thought exactly when I read that. $200 million figure though? Did I see that?
It's $1.8 million as well.
No, but I mean, what the grant money would be available to the 99 counties if.
It's.
You know, I mean, they, they, in their parameters were, you know, length was, you know, was one of the parameters. I did either that Preston Bridge or that one that was damaged. Yeah, that would be fantastic.
Yeah, and that one does qualify for other funding to the BRS money to fill in the extra because this only covers 75% of the, of the projects. We have to come up with the rest of the money so we can, the bridge money to fill in that void. But the, the thing is that the candidates that they choose have to pay for the writing of the grant. So it'll be divided between the projects and they expect that could be up to $100,000 total, which would be divided between the counties of.
The recipients of the fund.
Right.
So the should.
Whether, whether you get the money or not, we'll have to pay for that.
We don't know what that will be though. It could be two, three, five, $10,000 or something to that.
Right.
Yeah. Well, I think that's, that's a good gamble.
Yeah, I agree.
I don't.
I knew it.
Todd, what do you, how do you feel about that?
Uh, yeah, I would say if this is a project, you really, we need, you guys want to get replaced, then it's worth the, the money upfront to try and get the grant money.
Agreed.
We don't do it, we know we won't.
Yeah, that's a project, yeah.
Yeah, and once, once the money's a year's to get it under contract, so we should be able to get designed and going in that timeframe, so.
I guess that's the thing with Jackson County, I've said it how many times, you know, we have X amount of bridges and they're with the Macau River as close to where it goes into the Mississippi. We have some large spans.
Yeah, we do.
So it's, it's a major expense to our county that some other counties don't have. So I hope they would take that into consideration, you know?
Are there any weight limits on the Preston Bridge?
No.
Okay.
The height, that one doesn't qualify for the BRS money either.
Oh, darn.
All right.
Yeah, I would say we should.
Move forward that way?
Yeah.
For the 82nd.
Nope. Yeah.
I agree.
But I've got, I've got the grant.
So.
Written or what I need to do, the form's written and I need to send it.
So we need a motion to approve us going after the grant? According to your.
Yeah.
According to your agenda, it says approval of, to participate. I would so move that we proceed.
Second.
I have a motion of second to proceed with the ICEA build grant as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Was nay? Motion carried. Um, I guess I wanted to jump back to that entrance for me a little bit. I know I had talked to Mike here a while back. We talked about a few calls that I had and as far as driveways, there is regulations of how they need to be sloped or come toward a public road. So I don't know if there's anything in there that needs to be put or is that already in place in a different agreement type?
That's on the driveway permit.
Yeah.
What's required.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
Okay, anything else?
Any other questions for?
Have we heard anything from the insurance company?
We haven't turned anything against them yet. I'm still waiting.
Waiting for an estimating.
Waiting for my W. They're putting stuff together, but it's, it isn't here yet. He was hoping to have it in the next couple of weeks.
That'd be good.
Any other questions for Todd or Mike? Anything else for us, Mike, Todd?
Do you have anything else, Todd?
No, I'll be, I need to get in touch with Mike about some day labor bridge stuff that Alex just sent us a bunch of hydraulic design, so span length of some new structures. So I'm doing the design for the actual superstructure on that. So I want to get with Mike about some of that stuff, but that's, Mike and I just need to talk about that moving forward. So I'll get in touch with you, it'll probably be email, Mike, probably next, tomorrow, the next day.
Okay.
Okay, appreciate that, Todd, and we hope that you're feeling better.
All right, thank you.
You bet.
Right.
All right, do we have any visitors or citizens that would like to have any public comments at this time? No, hearing none. We will move on. Julie, are you available?
I sure am.
All right. So.
All right, good morning. Thank you for this time.
And Julie, is there a drug free communities project coordinator for ASAC?
I am.
Just explain that a little bit again, review for us or for everyone.
Okay, you should have, I think I gave Luanne two documents. One is a contract between ASAC and Jackson County for the project coordinator role, which I happen to be the person that fills at this point. It is essentially the same as the previous one. The difference is on the evaluator role that ASAC was filling, which was 0.07 of a full time equivalent person. We took that out. ASAC doesn't have staff right now to fill it and it is not a grant requirement anymore. The federal government took that out. The coalition may look at doing something different with evaluation, but it won't be part of the ASAC contract. The contract amount did go down 10,000 because we took out that evaluator and quite honestly, my insurance plan changed and so that made a difference as well. Sarah Davenport did jump off the call, but she has read the contract as well before Jeanette signed it.
Okay, so Julie, if, how many years is, was this a five year program? Is that correct?
It is, so we are finishing year two. Our five years will be up September 30th of 2023.
Okay. Just wanted to confirm that.
Yep. So and we, we have to do paperwork every year, but it's non-competing. If we, we can apply for a second five years and that becomes competitive. But right now we're in a non-competing phase. So we just keep doing our paperwork and it was submit due in August. Kimberly, the public health administrator and I worked on it, got it submitted and the federal government accepted it.
Okay.
So all we need to do is approve it and have Mike sign it, right?
Correct, if you're good with it.
Okay, make motion to approve.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the project coordinator project on the contract for DFC 2021 contract. And it's for the Area Substance Abuse Council grant. Drug Free Communities Support Grant. How about that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Was nay? Motion carried.
Okay, and the other document is I report, give a report to Kimberly for the Board of Health when they meet every other month because what we do is a public health matter. So I, this is the end of the year, so this is kind of a summary report. I just wanted to kind of talk with you for just a couple of minutes about what COVID meant to the work that we do. Because what drug free communities really is, is connecting with your community, mobilizing your community, gathering your community to do things, which are all really hard to do when you have to be socially distanced. So the coalition, you know, at first we kind of spent a couple of weeks just thinking this was going to be a short term deal. And when we realized it wasn't, we had to just change how we do business. So compliance checks, the goal had been for the grant to do two full rounds during the grant year. We had gotten, we had finished March 10th with the first round, so we were in really good shape and then COVID hit. We did not complete the entire second round. However, we explained that in our report and it was accepted because we had substantially completed the intent of the action step. We are still doing responsible beverage server trainings. We're now doing them virtually. So we do them through Zoom. We had to get the technology to make that work, but we did. We actually have scheduled to do one tonight for bars and restaurants. So nine establishments have sent 36 people this year. So that's the most we've had so far. The first year we had 28 people. So if we get a few more tonight, we should be up around in the 40s and we're quite pleased with that. We're continuing to do medication take back events. They're now drive up events, so law enforcement are standing outside. People drive up, everyone's masked, they hand them a bag and they drive away. So some of the things have been much easier to translate to drive up. We're working with the hospital on a policy related to opioid prescription because right the hospital has been using a pain scale and current models are encouraging people to use comfort scales to encourage other methods to deal with pain besides opioids. And we're looking at a model from Grundy County Hospital. And so that's in discussion, but even having those discussions is a real, you know, that's a step forward with, you know, in that department. The city of Macau did make their parks tobacco and nicotine free. The nicotine's the new part. We worked with the Iowa Department of Public Health and did some signage. And we're working with providers on providing them some information for their patients on non-opioid choices, trying to work with some policy things. We were the only overdose awareness vigil in the eastern half of the state on August 31st. And we offered a Narcan training at the same time. Narcan is the overdose reversal drug for opioids. Osterhaus Pharmacy partnered with that. We have some billboards up. I don't know if you have seen them. One is on Highway 61 by the old Bannowitz Antiques and one is north of Bellevue on 52. They should be up through the end of the month. One of them was created by some youth we're working with. It's the one on Highway 61. I'd encourage you, if you're driving down the highway, to take a look at it. They did a great job. The only thing we completely were unable to do this year was the safety checks. At first, the governor had kind of limited law enforcement's contact with people and then when that was like loosened up and we were ready to go on August 7th, we had too many law enforcement officers. we had too many law enforcement officers that were sick with COVID. We couldn't get enough officers together to do it safely. So we've added that to our next year's action plan and we'll try it again and hopefully things will be better. I guess, I think our biggest success that I see is the partnerships that have made all these things possible. Mike Clausing has been part of the work we do. If you've been to the fairgrounds, you'll see some metal signs that remind people the four H areas are alcohol-free. The coalition can't order from Iowa prison industries. So Mike, as a county employee, helped us do that. You know, Shelley Hoy takes great care of us and all, you know, the financial requirements. Sarah reads legal things for us. It's been a really good partnership and I think we've made great things happen. And because of that, we were offered the opportunity to participate in a pilot project at the federal level. 18 coalitions from across the country were selected. And so two of us went to a training. We were sitting at a table with Las Vegas, Nevada, Detroit, Michigan, Chicago, Illinois, and West Palm Beach, Florida. And there's Macocata, Iowa. So we were there, we kind of with the big boys, learning about this pilot project. And they picked us based on the results we've gotten and the work we do. It is an opioids pilot project and we will have that through February. But you know, that, we were really pleased at the federal level. They recognized the good work we're doing and wanted to include us. And so we're representing the rural portion of America, which I think is hilarious because, you know, we're really small, but there's a whole lot of rural America and apparently we're a good example of how that should look in rural America. So um.
Congratulations.
Well, yeah, that's.
Yes, that's wonderful.
It's nice to know that everyone can work together on things like that and accomplish things like that and be recognized for it.
It is, you know, even our safety checks, to make them fly, it takes the troopers, the sheriffs, Macocata, Bellevue, Sebula, and Preston PD to make that stuff work. Because we're small, no one agency can do it. And everyone, when we work with them, are willing to jump in, do what needs to be done. You know, the schools, so yeah, Jackson County has been an amazing place to work and do these things. When I'm on federal like meetings and stuff, they're all amazed at the things we can get done here. That the hospital staff will talk to me about a policy that, you know, if we want something on the radio, we call Dennis. You know, and he says, send it down and they put it on and they don't charge us. We're hoping to show a movie at the drive-in, it's a documentary in the next couple of weeks. You know, you keep, those things to do in a big town are really hard. So we are truly blessed to be here in Jackson County, working with everybody and the amazing people here. So um I predict good things are happening. I wanted to let you know that the number, every other year I show up and I share with you numbers from the Iowa U survey. And those are kind of the benchmarks we use for like 30-day use. How many 11th graders drank in the last 30 days? Part of one of the governor's proclamations back in May was to push that off for an entire year. So we will not have a fall Iowa U survey this year. And it's going to be a bit tricky because that's what we write grants with, that's what we report on, are those Iowa U survey numbers. But because of COVID and everything, the governor pushed them off a whole year, so they won't now do them until 21. So we're looking at how to work with schools to do some of our own surveys. So we have those numbers to see if we're moving in the right direction. You know, because now that we've been at it a couple of years, we're ready to see if we're making that big impact. And the state's not doing that survey. So we will figure it out, but it will look a little different, which seems to be a common theme.
Well, we certainly appreciate the work you're doing and we can only do as much as we can do with, with the situation we have. So we'll keep moving forward and we sure appreciate that.
And we appreciate the support of the board and everything that Jackson County does, so thank you.
You just helped prove that it is one of a kind.
We are. Yeah, we spend a lot of time explaining how to pronounce Macocata, but that's okay. That's all right, we'll get them.
Thanks for everything you do. Yeah.
All right, then. And we're moving right along, we're down to Lisa, our Jackson County, her business for the meeting.
Motion needed to approve the minutes of the September 15th, 2024 proceedings as written by auditor Smith and authorized publication in the official newspapers.
So moved.
There's a change, you had me as a second for adjournment and I wasn't there.
Oh, yeah, I'll correct that.
Well, she thought you were ready.
No.
I was ready to go, okay, I was. I'll second that.
I'll correct that.
Do you want a second at this time?
He can't, he wasn't.
Okay, that's right, I can't.
You'd have to second it.
I would second the, approve the minutes of the September 15th, 2024 proceedings with the correction as noted. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose nay? Motion carried.
Motion needed to approve and authorize the auditor's office to issue a handwritten warrant to Wells Heating and Air Conditioning for $19,622 as pre-authorized per home code.
So moved.
Can make second.
I have motion in a second to approve the handwritten warrant to Wells Heating and Air Conditioning for $19,622 as pre-authorized. And that also includes a very substantial discount. And we are working with the insurance company on the outcome of that. So stay tuned.
Yes.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose nay? Motion carried.
That's all that I have for the board today.
Thank you. All right. Luann? Are you available? Looks like it. Coming this way.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Hey, calendar this week. One o'clock this afternoon is an ECIA Fiber 101 training for fiber optics. And that's a webinar and you're all signed up for it if you want to participate in that. 5:30 this evening is Operation of Views Finance Committee Meeting by Zoom for Jack. And at 6:30 tonight is their board meeting, their last board meeting by Zoom for Jack and Larry. Wednesday, September 23rd at 9:00 AM is an iris meeting by Zoom for Larry. And 11 o'clock is a T scope of coordination project meeting by Zoom for Mike. And there is no packet for that, it's strictly informational, she said.
Okay, I, I got a question. Larry, will you make that iris meeting?
Um, well, let me think, when is that, Friday morning, Thursday?
Wednesday morning, tomorrow morning.
Tomorrow morning. Yeah, I'll try to do that.
Are you, are you the alternate yet?
Yeah.
Kimberly is the alternate.
Yeah, Kimberly's the alternate, but last time.
Important, I wouldn't say that.
If you find out you're not going to be able, could you just email Luann and, and I would set in on it for you?
Okay, I'll do that.
I'd like to hear what the spruce creek.
Yeah, I want to hear about Spruce Creek and I want to hear about Leisure Lake.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, I'll do that.
All right, thanks.
All right. Tomorrow afternoon at four o'clock is ECIA's executive and council meetings. And I think the ECDC at the same time, where they do it. So that's by Zoom for Jack. And at six o'clock tomorrow night is the Farm Bureau Forum at the Onward Fine Arts Center. And Mike's gonna be there for that.
Consul Lisa.
Consul Lisa.
Yes, I will.
Do you know, are they videoing it? Does anybody know? Usually they do.
I need to use the word assume, but I would think that moving it to onward that they would.
Well, I'm hoping they do since I can't be there to watch.
Yeah, I don't know. I, I did not say on the invitation.
I, I don't believe it said either, no, I had that.
I would think they would want to video it.
I would think so. I'll make sure.
Should film it.
I, I, is Karen on?
Karen is not.
I would, I would think, I, I don't know. I mean, I can ask the Farm Bureau if it's being videoed, but I would think that they usually run them on the local access channel, right?
They usually do.
Okay.
Okay. Thursday, September 24th at 9:00 AM is an RPA meeting by Zoom for Jack and Larry, if he's going to participate. At 11 o'clock that morning is a CSEI meeting by Zoom for Jack. And at 1:00 PM that afternoon is Isaac's Flood Resilient Iowa webinar that everybody is signed up for.
And Ben is well aware of that too, correct?
Ben is aware of that, yep. Friday, September 25th at 7:00 AM is a Macocata Leadership Team Meeting by Zoom for Larry. It'll be 6:00 AM where you are, I assume. For that meeting.
Yeah, it's eight o'clock here now, or 8:30.
Right. So, and I will be out of the office that day, so. Saturday, September 26th at 1:00 PM is the Iowa State Parks Annual Volunteer Day at Bellevue State Park. Monday, September 28th at 4:00 PM is early childhood, Clinton Jackson County's Early Childhood Open House. And that's being done virtually by Zoom. So everybody's invited to that. At 5:00 PM.
We're having that. This is where all of the people that have contracts with Early Childhood Iowa make a short presentation as to what their contributions are or what, what they provide for the, for the kids. And so it's, it's pretty interesting. They each give us a little synopsis of, of the responsibilities that they have. And it'll be done virtually this time, and so we'll just go from there.
Okay. At five o'clock that afternoon is Mississippi Valley Workforce Executive Board Meeting by Zoom for Jack. And our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, September 29th at 9:00 AM. And that afternoon at four o'clock is Eastern Iowa Children's Advisory Committee Meeting by Zoom for Jack. Terms of business today, all I have is the Growth Services Contract. This is a contract that we have been doing annually and they service the waste order treatment system at the Andrew Jackson Care Facility.
Correct. They, we had a couple items last year, one of the lids was cracked, I believe, and, and the filters were all done. And that's an annual contract, correct?
Like we call them if there's a problem and they give us a list of.
Sure.
When they come of what needs to be fixed or changed.
With the cost, correct? Estimate.
Yes.
Cost estimate. No, but I mean, they supply us with an estimate, so we know where we're at.
Right.
Would anybody like to make a motion?
I would move we.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to approve the Growth Services Contract for that Andrew Jackson Care Water Waste Treatment Facility. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose nay? Motion carry.
That's all I have.
Do, we do not have this on our business today, then the, we, we did, I hope everybody's seen the inspection we got back from Tri-State Sprinkler at the care facility. We do not have that on our agenda to approve. I mean, to move forward with it.
It's ongoing discussions, pending discussion.
Yeah, it's under further.
It's under unfinished business. Andrew Jackson Care Sprinkler System.
Okay, so I guess we'll just talk about it when we get there and then we'll bring it, put it on the agenda next week. I, yeah. Talk about it when we get there.
Yeah.
So is, is that it, Lou?
That's all I have.
Okay, appreciate it, thank you. And do we know if, do we schedule any work sessions here with Ben or Marty? Are they expecting to come? Present anyway?
Ben should be. And Marty.
Just been coming in?
Yes.
Yeah.
We.
Ready?
We will take a short recess at this time. All right, we will reconvene at this time and we are joined by, with Ben Colber, our Jackson County zoning administrator. We're for an update.
Okay.
Morning, Ben.
Good morning. So we were just chatting about some nuisances there. There's one out on, this would be 150th Streets east of the main Iron Hill.
By the church.
Yeah, so.
And our, and our.
The recycle.
Recycled ones.
Okay. So by the church in Green Island?
No. Iron Hill.
Iron Hill. I'm sorry.
Wrong direction.
Yeah, exactly, wrong, yeah, definitely wrong direction. If it's the one I, I think we're talking about, that they also have like a gooseneck trailer that also.
They have a lot of stuff.
Yeah, but this.
Old vehicles and.
Sure, and we were talking about the right-of-way in particular, that also, it would appear is closer than.
That's not 150th though, is it? That's a cave room?
No, it's not.
Basically E17.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, so just.
It's the one that we're going to resurface next year.
Yeah, yeah, as soon as we can, yeah.
Yeah.
That one.
Yeah.
Um, I will, I will do that. I will get on his case, I think. Obviously, there's a lot of problems with that one, so.
There sure are. I don't know how they can even get a vehicle in the driveway.
Yeah, they, I, I mean, I, I don't know if, I don't know anything about the house as well, if it's even used or if it's just, you know, he just uses it.
Yeah, I, I don't know.
Well, let's follow up with it.
It was a homestead exemption, so I would.
Oh, okay. All right, there we go then. So, but yeah, as far as refuse or garbage stored in the right-of-way, our nuisance ordinance does refer to like, I think for some reason dead animal parts, you know, but.
Some of them under that stuff.
You know, I, I think there is, there's usually a gooseneck trailer there that hangs almost onto the shoulder, which I mean, if we're talking about a right-of-way with, usually it's 33 feet from the center line.
Yeah.
You know, could be farther on a lot of our paved roads. I know it's fairly straight there, so. Thank for secondary roads, but just going by it, you know, that's certainly an issue.
There's certain liability issue there to somebody, either us or them, you know, one way or the other, so if something happens.
Um.
Certainly.
Yeah, exactly. And I think there's another one that I've been contacted. This is, the address is 1797240 Third Street. So I've mentioned this before out past. Spesmy Clinic, Taco John's, right as you get onto gravel there. There's a shared driveway, you can't see anything from the road, but when you go up, there's just a lot of garbage there. So I've received a half dozen complaint form in the last few weeks about that one. So I think would really appreciate complaint forms because, you know, if, if it gets to the point where someone's going to question who's complaining or whatever, like, you know, I'd appreciate it coming from the board or, you know, something else. But having it come, you know, come from a neighbor, a neighboring property owner, I think. You know, really how we should do things.
So we have them, are we proceeding forward with them?
Yes, yes, I've got this one almost ready to go and I will drive out and serve them myself, so that they are clear.
Soon, right?
Was that?
Soon.
I'm gonna try to do it today. Probably, you know, hopefully right before I go to lunch or.
I know we talked about it last week too, so either this week or tomorrow or.
And, and for this one, if we're all okay with it, I would like to give them a week.
Yeah, we agreed to that last week because there's critters.
Yeah, so that's kind of, you know, what the, what the complaint is about. There's, you know, we see rats or poons or what have you, that is taken care of. So I will do that one as well. So other than that, I'm waiting for, I sent about 10 complaint forms out to Leisure Lake residents. Who's called me a few times about property near him. So I said, you fill out the ones that are near you, if you've got other problems, give, give these forms to a neighbor that one, so that he can, he or she can send them to me. And then, you know, we can go forward with that. So hopefully I'm receiving those sometime, he should have got all those last week, so. And then, other than that, we haven't had any new board of adjustment applications yet, so October 12th, I think, is our next meeting date. If we don't get anything this week, then I'm just going to have a normal, just meet briefly on Zoom, just to make sure we can do that smoothly. So, because just kind of keeping track of some of the cases.
Yeah.
Going on, I want to, you know, make sure that's going to be a feasible method, you know, going forward.
Okay, we appreciate that, just, yeah, just keep moving forward with them, Ben, and so we.
Absolutely, I think, you know, the more complaints, then I will, I'll send some forms.
And maybe follow up the Leisure Lake resident too, to see that, that they proceed with that.
Yeah, I've. Yeah, I've I've talked with him a few times over the summer and, you know, he, the one he's talking about is definitely a nuisance. It's just I, you know, have have a, you know, paper trail of what's going on.
Absolutely.
Move forward.
Right.
All right. Thanks, Ben. Did we track down Marty yet?
Nope. He's not answering his phone.
Okay, how about Lynn? Did you find Lynn? She across the street?
Probably she's not due till 10:20, so she
Oh, it is, we are
Lead didn't let him aim this way.
We're done a little early. You wanna start this way? Oh, okay. All right, thanks.
Do you want to recess?
We will take a short recess at this time.
Okay.
All right, good morning. We are, we will reconvene at this time. We're joined with Lynn Bulb, our Jackson County Coordinator of Disability Services. Good morning, Lynn.
Morning. And I am here once again to follow the region's monthly meeting that Jack and I attended yesterday. So I'll hit some of the highlights and Jack is welcome to jump in with whatever I missed, clarify whatever I I just The afternoon actually started with a special meeting of the governing board to review applications that the region had received for the CARES Act dollars. If you remember, the mental health region received $2.8 million in CARES Act funding to be made available to providers that provide services to, that serve individuals with disabilities that are covered in our region's management plan. So we put out an initial request for a proposal and yesterday, the board approved approximately $600,000 in expenditures. Um, we received about 1.2 million in requests, but they were vetted initially by the management team and then the governing board has the authority to make the final decisions on what's awarded. And um, as I know you guys are all painfully aware, the use of federal dollars comes with a lot of requirements, expectations, but some that are not always made readily known to those receiving the money, so
Lots of regulations.
Lots of regulations.
Lots of attachments, huh?
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure that's new information.
Yeah.
So um, we obviously have quite a bit of money left, so the plan is to move forward and um, notify providers again of a second opportunity to apply for funding. Some providers might have overlooked um, the deadline and some maybe weren't actually aware of it, although the region's a press release and it is available on the region's website. Actually, that's where we direct people to go to apply. So that was the first hour and a half or so of Jack's afternoon yesterday. From there, we moved into the regular monthly governing board meeting at 3:00 AM. And um, kind of, I would say, a pretty routine meeting.
Yeah.
Time for a change. The region's fund balance is at about $2.00 million and um, the region's fiscal agent does give an update every month of the fund balance and the projection out for the entire fiscal year. So we all have somewhat of an idea of what his anticipation is as far as where we will all stand financially. The, there was a um, update given on two committees that are a part of the governing board. One has to do with just the financial structure of the region. Jack participated in that one. Um, there was some discussion about how do, how does our region compare to other regions as far as we manage the financial aspect of of a region? There was a uh, a thought that maybe we were one of the only regions that does not pool all of our
No, the only region.
The only region.
We were the only region that didn't pool.
Lori Elin, the CEO, gathered information once again on how 14 regions in the state of Iowa manage their money and um, really, there are only a couple, if any at all, that truly take all of the property tax revenue that's collected by the counties and the respective region and put it into one fund and pay everything out of there. Most of the regions have a model similar to ours in where there's some money that's maintained at the local level and then um, some bills that are considered region bills that are paid out of our region's fiscal year.
So like crisis services and
Right. Um, insurance
As long as you can differentiate and agree to what them are, that's a good thing, yeah.
Yeah, and I would say
And that's all set in policy, right?
It's in the management, it's in the 2018 agreement, actually, how some of those are funded. So and the other committee has to do with rate setting and some concerns about like agencies providing like services have a wide range of reimbursements. And so we're kind of taking a look at what our stimulus reimbursements, probably looking more so at community mental health centers. A lot of the vocational services anymore are just set by Medicaid rates. So there's really no negotiation or individual contracts rates that are set by the region. And the presentation was made by Todd Nowak, uh, Life Connections of Dorit and Adlan, who is also very involved in peer support services. Just kind of an overview of what peer support services are. I would say that those are, oh, we, two contracts were agreed upon by the governing board and they both involve Jackson County providers, so imagine the possibilities in Hillcrest. Really, no changes of any rates in those contracts from previous years. And if you remember, the region did decide to freeze rates for this current year just to give us a chance to figure out where we stand financially as we go into next year. Lori Elin's report to the governing board um, was that in the next legislative session, it seems, I would say, certain that there will be no new money infused into the mental health system. Largely now, I feel, the result of COVID and the derecho and the expenses the state is experiencing between those two crisis situations. She does uh, feel though that potentially some implementation dates will be moved back for certain services. So there will be some pressure taken off of regions to implement some services that will be very costly to them. So I would say that's the highlight from the meeting.
And I guess the, one of the things that um, I'm still concerned about, and I didn't bring it up yesterday, because I didn't wanna but I'm still really concerned about the children's services and, you know, um, we were supposed to hire somebody to coordinate those, we're supposed to have, you know, contracts with people to provide services and obviously, we don't have the money to do it, but, you know, the state really didn't tell us we could wait.
No, no, they did not.
They're supposed to have somebody onboard July 1st, we don't have. And so I I, you know, that that kind of bothers me. And I know it's, I I know it's impossible for Lori to keep taking on more and more and more. She just can't do that. And so I don't, I don't know what's gonna happen with that. And I know it's just a small, it's it's a small amount of children now, but if we, if we look at past history, who knows what the legislators will do this year? Because if if they think more children need services, which they do, I don't, I don't dispute that. But um, I don't know what, I don't know what our Eastern Iowa Mental Health Region is gonna do.
Yeah, that is a concern and the management team talks about that periodically for the first year, which, just to uh, make sure everybody understands, July 1st of this year, the mental health regions were tasked with the responsibility to provide some services or make sure services are available to children in a specific population group, individuals, children whom have a diagnosis of a severe emotional disturbance, an SED, which means that they're suffering, you know, they're struggling with some challenges. The first year, Jack, I think, with the exception of not having anybody designated as the coordinator of children's services, which was a part of the legislation. The other things that are, the region is to assure that are in place, fortunately, we do have in place. Because if, and I, I'd have to refresh my memory on all of them, but basically, it was crisis services, which we have for people of all ages, um, outpatient
Right.
mental health services, and then some training opportunities. The training opportunities uh, were working, we're, I think we're going to try and partner with like AEA. And I believe there were like a training opportunity quarterly or four times during the year. There's already some trainings that are scheduled that we could probably um, assist with and then that would satisfy that expectation for the first year. The second year gets a little more costly, because the second year moves into some more actual services, I believe. Children's hospitalizations and things like that. So um, and knowing that there's no money infused in the system for going to be for fiscal year 22, that does create a challenge.
And yes, you're right. They don't You know, I guess I just keep thinking about everything they've done to us over the last 10 years in mental health. And um, I just cannot understand how they can sit there and not infuse some additional funding or at least give us the ability to generate some additional revenue, which we've talked about for years.
Right.
Because, I mean, we can't exist and we can't continue to provide the services that we are doing with the the revenue that we have.
Right.
And we can't expect the providers of those services to always freeze their their compensation.
No.
Because they're, I mean, their expenses continue to go up, just like everybody else's continued to go up. And if you say, no, this is all you get to provide that service, I can see some of them saying, you know, basically, go to hell. We can't do it. And that's the same way I feel about Jim's wish to have every charge the same thing.
Yeah.
Because I don't care what anybody says. When you're, when you're putting together what that fee has to be, you can't just look at what the neighbors do. You have to look at what your overall cost of operation are.
Right.
And I know Vera French says that's not true.
I know.
But I just, I just cannot believe that somebody to have, you have to take the cost of operation into, it's not just the salary of that individual. They have to have an office, they have to have a computer, they have to have everything that they need to do that job. And that all has to fall within the cost structure.
Right.
And so how they can say, everybody, just because in Clinton County, you can get med assistance for $58 or $54 or whatever it is, that doesn't mean in Scott County and Muscatine and all these other cities that you can get it for the same amount.
Right. No, I I agree with that.
It just, every time, every time we talk about that, it just frustrates me, because, you know, we live in a world where uh, a lot of people, a lot of, need a lot of services. And not every service is gonna cost the same in every county.
No, you know, and and one of the big, and this is not a surprise to anybody in this room. One of the big challenges that providers are experiencing right now is the whole workforce.
Oh, absolutely.
And that has been compounded significantly by the virus, by COVID, because they've lost employees. With some of the incentives that were out there, the employees were not as interested in returning to work as quickly. All of those kinds of factors. And so one of the things that was approved yesterday, for example, for CARES Act dollars, was uh, to do marketing and advertising specific to replace staff and fill vacancies that were created as a result of staff leaving because of COVID. And, you know, the one provider that made that their primary request for funding was very articulate, I thought, and well spoken in how they justified that this is directly, in their case, it's in a larger area, it's directly related to COVID because of why, how they lost employees and why they lost them. So
And they're at such a premium anyway.
Well, exactly. I mean, there's such a shortage. Um, and wages are just not competitive with some of the, or fast food chains and places like that. Can't be, because they can't, they can't raise the cost of their services. Medicaid, Medicaid, as we all know, is not a sufficient funder for services. You know, for most services that agencies provide, so um
And I still, I still believe that the way things are going and all the issues that we are facing, that the, that there's gonna be a higher, a bigger need for services down the road, you know, it's gonna catch up with individuals and am I right in saying, we did do children's testing and found there was an issue, but we have no resources or a plan to move forward with it. I mean, we complied with the last plan and nobody else did. So now, you know, do we, do we, I don't know that we jump out and try to hire somebody, there's not tonight.
Well, who pushes the point to hire, to get going with children's services? To hire that
Legislation. It's a law. It's legislated.
Whether they get punished or the sanctions Already, right? So they, they've legislated it already.
July 1st.
We just don't have any money to move forward.
Mandate with Our region has not hired anybody or spent the money there. I don't know how the other four, 13 regions are doing. If they hired a, a administrator for children's services, we just decided that as a, as a board, we're not gonna do that, because we don't have the money to do it. And until the state participates or is a, is a team player with us, I mean, I mean
Well, even if you do hire somebody, you don't, you don't have the resources to move forward with it. I mean, what's, what's the person to do is implement a program that's
Currently, for the first year, you know, the programming that has to be available is, and to a large extent, it's, it's out there in what this coordinator would do is just kind of try to pull it all together and promote it more and work more closely with the schools. So what some regions have done, and so I would say this is our response to what we've been doing. The board, the governing board has not officially designated one of the management team members to take on that role, to be the point of contact in that position, but that is what some regions have done. They've looked at their coordinators that are already were in place and identified, you know, which ones would accept that as an additional responsibility to their jobs. Currently, I would say the management team is kind of working collectively. Lori's leading the charge. Lori has more on her plate than than is manageable, I would say, for most people. It's a huge job just to manage the adult system and um, you know, one of the important parts of a region is to assure that the services are there and going smoothly. And so they run into hiccups or when Eagle Bay opens up, um, you know, they've had their own challenges. The new hospital in Bettendorf, and so they're up to about a 20-bed capacity right now. But those are the kinds of administrative things that as CEO of the region, Lori needs to be spending her time with, assuring that those relationships exist and being that link to the community people that are satisfied or not satisfied with the aspects, aspects of service, so. So I do have one piece of news. And I'm thinking maybe it would be good to at Hillcrest to actually come in and discuss this more thoroughly with the board. But Hillcrest received um, $1.8 million grant for each for two years. So they already received the money. I believe it's a federal grant, so I think it probably started October 4th or will start. It is to establish a certified community behavioral health clinic. And it will be here in Macopada. And you might be aware that Hillcrest no longer provides the alternative school setting.
Right.
So they have half of that building that they own now. I believe they own the the Rosenberg Building. They have half of that, that's empty, so they already have the bricks and mortar, if you will, to set this clinic up. It is intended to enhance the accessibility and availability of mental health services to people of this area. People that are uninsured, underinsured. People that are not as comfortable going to a community mental health center, but going to a health clinic. It's a little more um, holistic, if you will. They will have access to a primary to care physician as well as a part of the, the team. They will have care coordinators. It's kind of a compliment to current medical services in the community and current mental health services in the community is how I look at it. So I was in a meeting with Hillcrest last week and they were talking a little bit about it and I, I don't know if the board would be interested in having them come and explain it in more detail.
I think it'd be great.
Yeah, I think a work session would be in order.
Okay, yeah, it it's pretty exciting from a coconut. I'm really happy um, that they pursued the grant, that they got it. And I, Jack, I think some of the money that they asked for from the CARES dollars um, will help staff up and running because they're anticipating, you know, serving a population of people that are stressed out because of the COVID. I mean, in addition to just business. And it's for two years. The idea is to give an agency two years to get established in this kind of service delivery and have it be sustainable, sustainable on their own. That's kind of what the premise is, I believe, for the two years of funding.
That's the, that's a long-term goal, is it be sustainable?
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, that's the problem all along.
Always, yeah, you start things and then it doesn't have the means to continue, so
That's great news.
Yeah, yeah, we haven't seen a whole lot of publicity for it yet. We were actually awarded it, I think, a couple of months ago and I know that TH might have had a, a brief article on it.
They did.
They did.
Did they? Yeah, yeah. So I will work with Luanne and Hillcrest to see about getting them set up. They may want to wait just a little bit longer until they're a little bit further into the process of actually getting it. I know what I mentioned to them about going on the radio and things, that was kind of their thought was waiting until they're a little more established on how it's going to work.
Sounds great.
Sounds reasonable.
Yeah, there's, so that's all I have.
Well, that's, yeah, that's.
It's always good to end on a high note.
I appreciate. I don't do that.
Appreciate the info one way or the other anyway, so we know what we're against.
That's right.
It's a, we always, we kind of suspect most of it, but.
Yeah.
Things change. I read most of Lori's emails, sometimes she, she gets a little frustrated with what we're going through, but that's, that's normal.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, for bragging reasons.
Thanks, Lynn.
Yeah, thanks, guys.
Uh, did Marty walk down the hallway? I seen him once here.
I just asked him to come back.
Okay.
So, he's on his way.
Then we'll just wait a minute.
You want to recess?
Well, depends how long it's going to take him. I thought I could hear him, but when the door opened. If he's just chatting out there, let's. Larry's got things to do.
They do. Yeah, she might as well recess then. So what's up for your day today, Larry?
I think we're.
We will reconvene at this time to our recess, from our recess. Unfinished business, do we have things under unfinished business we can go over quick? Any boards or commission reports? I know we got a report from Jackson County.
Have you been down to see what kind of a mess they left on the levee down there for us?
Who did that? The railroad, Roger? Okay, we are back. We did receive our report from the Tri-State Sprinkler Automatic Sprinkler Session for the Care Facility, and there's some issues there that we need to address. So I guess we will put that on next week's agenda to proceed, either proceed or not proceed, but with three requests that they found some few things that, deficiencies that need to be addressed. I guess we will address them next week, to the best of our ability. I know the, John has been working with Marla up at ECIA, so we do have some information that they're, they're putting together and we're waiting to see what kind of pamphlet Marla comes up with. I think we have indicated to her that we want a one-page.
Yep.
And she had asked a question, maybe two, every eligible voter or to each household, I would say each household.
I would say each household.
Sufficient, yeah.
That's what I thought when I.
I would, I would think so too. I don't know, we need to send two to each household.
Head Start lease.
I know that I talked to Sarah yesterday about that, and she's had some dialogue.
October 1st is coming up fast.
Yeah, I talked to her about it yesterday, like I said, and.
Maybe we can charge them another $130,000.
Well. That building got a lot more expensive. But, so yeah, she's aware of it, she's working on, and I know she's had a contact. So I will put it on my list to visit with her again.
And also, I guess, when we look at that county property use policy, I know we've got some information from our insurance agent about using, so that's something that we're going to have to.
Follow up with.
That and the, and the casual labor needs to be discussed. We need to have a work session on that.
And if I, if I read that right, we do not need to have a waiver though, is that correct?
For? Would you have for the volunteers?
For the volunteers, we do, but not for the others.
But we should have casual labor should be under more of a contract than we have a written agreement, and that would be spelled out in there as to whether or not, what they have to have for insurance and how much.
I don't believe I have anything else under other boards or commissions.
Well, we had our workforce development board meetings yesterday, and I guess we're moving along. Everything seems to be going okay.
You were certified today, I just got the message from Miranda.
Oh, we did? Okay.
Your email.
Okay. Well, that's good.
Yeah.
I see the meetings are getting shorter anyway, so that's a positive. I think I looked for the time of a journey.
There's a lot of them.
Yeah, there is. So I guess, just a reminder, Larry, make sure that you touch base if you don't make the IRIS meeting, so we have a representative somebody there for us.
Okay. I think I can make that work, so.
Okay, did we ever track down Marty?
He just sent me a text, "I'm on my way."
From where?
He was working at the Penrose Garage, is what I understood him to, where it could be.
Makes sense.
Trying to finish up the, the glass, whatever you call it.
Framework?
Yes. Trying to get that into the home stretch, I'm sure he'll talk to you about projects at Andrew Jackson Care. And the direction that we need to go as far as that.
Uh, yes, we had, I had some conversation with secondary roads and, yeah, I think we're moving forward with them.
Oh, okay, yeah, so we.
I don't know about the bell, I'll have to ask Marty about the bells.
I did not speak to him about that.
Um, we did have some conversation about the concrete.
Did have some conversation about that. Yeah.
I didn't know we were paving the whole parking lot.
I totally missed the estimate, is what I'll tell you. And I think, you know, he's just on the home stretch trying to finish up with the recorder's office.
Well, if he can get some of the little projects wrapped up, that's the thing, that's, that's what we like. Here we go, now here comes Marty.
Sorry for the delay.
All right. Marty Hoodlicker, Jackson County Maintenance Supervisor for updates.
Um, I got two people look at the concrete up there at the care facility. I got one bid back and I got another gentleman that's going to go check it out. I have it marked with white paint so they know what everybody's bidding. I don't know the pound, but it's six and a half bagnecks. And then we're going to seal it with sealer so that the soft.
That's 4,500, that's plenty for a sidewalk.
Yeah, but it's just, concrete today is like concrete was 20 years ago.
So.
We don't want to have to do this again.
Overall, we're looking at, I know the, the issue with this is, is a spot here and a spot here and a spot over on the corner and a spot on the other side.
Twenty-three of them.
Yeah, so of them 23 spots, we got 16 yards concrete.
It's 20, because the park bench was on one that I didn't see and, and so it's fully on it.
My, my point is, with the last bid that we received, if we received several bids, we're going to have to decide where our priorities lie.
Yeah.
What I, what's what I'm saying, what I think, anyway. I mean, it's maybe, maybe we can do a few of them, maybe we can touch one or two and, and they can get three or four or five of them, you know, whatever, whatever our priorities might be up there. I don't know if we made any progress with the trees, it didn't look like it yesterday when I went by.
Trying to get Arlene done.
Yep, I get it, I get it, to get that done and then we'll move on. The water valve, we're going to try to work that.
Joel, Joel Woods told me if it works and it's stiff, just to take it and go like this.
You told us that, but we haven't got. I did talk, I told you, we talked to secondary roads about some fill dirt along either side of the driveway going in, and we thought we could get that accomplished yet. They're going to try to accommodate that. And I asked, and they are, you know, kind of set on time here themselves with some of their projects, and they have a few people off with the, with the ongoing, yes. And we talked about taking a look anyway at that silted-in pond and see if we could remove that fence and then maybe push that forward, push that up the hill and use that in the septic field where we can. At, at a timeframe that's close enough, he could get his little machine up there and run over top to septic system and, and fill some of them.
Yeah.
I, I don't know.
It's up there in the shed already, so it would work on the, get the, get the fill in.
And, and at that time, they didn't know how much time they would have to allocate to maybe pushing that up there, but we'll see how that works this fall yet.
If we can get it next year, it'll be, it's been that way for.
No, but it's going to be terrible to try to mold that.
Oh, yeah.
I, I mean, hard on.
See, Dave always mowed it with the brush on.
Yeah.
So it wasn't bad. These guys mow with the lawn mower.
And it looks really nice.
Yeah, it's awesome, I will say that, yes. The trees, the trees will cut, cut them, we're gonna, Dave has a cable up there, anyway, we did the last ones. Hook the cable in the tree, put the tractor way away, cut it and pull it. And then I think somebody, I think Jared said he would cut it up the last I talked.
Okay, so I guess one other thing just could come to mind was the large, all the trees that we took out last year are still there. We were going to talk to Andrew Fire Department one time to see if they could have a control burn there. I know I give them, give all them fire departments credit, they've been very busy here in the last couple of weeks.
We want to keep it away from our sheds.
They had another major structure Sunday or Saturday, whatever it was, so they had four different departments there.
It's like the third or fourth one.
Yeah, it is, two over there by Andrew and oh, close to you over there.
Yeah, Dave Green.
Yeah. This was a brand-new building that one, this week.
Really?
Holy hey.
Yeah. That's.
We give them, give them kudos out to our fire, volunteer fire departments.
Yeah. So anyway, I'm hoping by the, the week's end, I'm ready to put that thing in there. I've sanded it down, made it smooth, and then I gotta put the stops in where the glass butts to. I'm going to start that here in a couple hours or an hour or so. And get that, once I get that done, we'll paint it quick. And then I lined up some help, Sean and, and Mike Babcock said they'll come up along with Mike and help me lift it up into place and hold it and put it in.
Okay.
The glass is ordered. He told me when I would talk to him, it'd be four or five days, the glass, so the glass should be here hopefully first of the week, next week.
All right, update on the AC?
Uh, it's working, as far as I know. I go down there every hour, a couple hours, check it. We shut it off at night, because they still want us to kind of babysit it, just to make sure that everything's working good.
Okay, kickboard over to the recorder's office, did we talk about that? Molding?
Yes, I took that off. Just so you know, when it's.
This morning?
So did the plaster. So now I'm going to spend a couple hours plastering the bottom to put the.
It doesn't surprise me, you know, I can, I honestly, I thought the blue looked fine, but.
That's why I, she asked me and I passed her on to you, that way.
Thanks.
That's why you get the big bucks, Jack.
Oh, yeah.
You know I'm only kidding.
I know.
Uh, but I wasn't going to do that without your okay. Then, you know, because I knew that was going to happen.
And I'll get back to Matt on some of them projects that he was questioning.
Like I say.
Touch base.
When I get done with a day doing the trees, a day doing the trees in the valve.
Yeah.
That can't take that long. The sidewalk, that's going to take some time, because it, like I said, it's all behind the building. You're going to have a wheelbarrow it or haul it with something, because you can't get a cement truck back there. Because if you do, then you're going to damage the lawn more than if you wheelbarrow it.
So the point is, if, if, if all the projects are ready and available, go. It could be such a thing as a pumper truck too, that would, might be feasible, you know. I don't know.
That was only.
Skid loader works good too.
I'm sorry?
Skid loader, a bucket, use a bucket of skid loader for sidewalks, works nice. I mean, it might tear it up a little bit, but not, I mean, it's a lot faster.
They're talking about, and then they got a, it's a hopper thing with a chute out the bottom, the one guy got, that you just go on and it pours it, but that, whatever they do, that's what they got to do.
But you're still going to carry it with a skid loader, no.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I think this bucket thing fits up the skid loader.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The water project down at senior center and Head Start.
I was supposed to go at 10 o'clock and get the, the paper, and I forgot about it. I'll go get that.
The results?
Yeah. I'll, I, I can almost bet.
Can they email it over to us?
I don't know, you can call them and ask them, but.
Cam, right?
Yeah. I'll bet you more likely it's going to have lead in, you know, we got two buildings there already, you know.
We need, I, I'm sorry, we need to keep this taken care of.
Well, I keep calling the city, and it's just like, well, they does, and he does. Of course, they haven't tested their water in three years, he's in, he do it every three years. What are you doing?
Oh, well, maybe we do.
Well, I don't know.
No. Okay, so I guess what's the direction of the board then? How do we want to proceed?
Well, I, I think we got to wait for the sample, because if it's clean, then we got problems in our two, two buildings, I would say.
Well, to me, it's scary.
That's what I'm saying, this has gone on long enough.
And I did, and I did tell you, the black, black plastic pipe that the Water Works Department thought that the MMEU hit that and maybe just put a piece of black pipe in.
That's what she said.
So there could be some lead pipe that from, from that to the building yet somewhere.
I would say the other way.
Towards main?
Comes up in the bill, yeah, because it comes up in the bill in copper and usually they won't splice it.
Either or, we're going to have to find it.
Yeah, I agree, so. But I.
Before we get a hard freeze.
Yeah, I'm kind of waiting for this sample, and I, I admit I dropped the ball on this, I should have been over there and got it, but I forgot about it, except trying to get Arlene done, you know what I mean?
Yeah. Do you want me to send somebody or?
Well, I just got to drive by and get it, and he's got to stop and get it, and then I'll have it, all right?
All right.
Okay, let's follow up with it though, so we know what our priorities lie.
Yeah.
Okay, my question is.
Okay.
Do we know if anybody is checking the welcome center? From.
We don't probably know that.
Well, didn't Tom say that somebody was going there daily?
Well, that's what he said, but Mike says that's not been happening, so.
All I know is I, when I've been down there and every time I've bound them bugs, they were still there. And the last time I went down there to make sure they were dead, they were still there.
How long ago was that?
Uh, two weeks ago, wasn't it?
At least.
You know, when you have fun like I do, time flies by.
I guess my concern is if there are bugs there.
Yeah.
Well, I think it could be a simple phone call to Tom and say, hey, has somebody checked?
I can look down there if you want me to.
No, I don't want you to.
That's why.
And that's exactly my point.
I understand that, yeah, that's why I threw that out.
I want you to go back to the, you want you to go back to the building and get that done.
What's that?
Why don't you go back to your garage and get that done?
Well, I'm working on that.
So are you saying we should, one, somebody here should reach out to Tom?
I can call Tom.
Yeah.
Do you want me to call Tom?
And we'll know where we're at with that.
Yep.
Okay.
It'll take a little bit, because of my van, it'll work up.
Okay, thanks, Marty.
Yeah, have a good day, people.
Yeah.
Thanks, Marty. All right, any other boards or commission reports or unfinished business? I think we covered most of, most of everything on our agenda.
I move we adjourn.
At second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
O's nay, motion carried, meeting adjourned. Thank you all.
Have a good time, Larry.
See you guys later.